Good afternoon, everyone. We will be starting in one minute, council. One minute. I need another council member to start the meeting.
One more.
Now, one more.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming to today's council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are here except Councilwoman Gonzalez, and she is en route. We will start off with our citizen comments. Michael Fornino. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
RS 23163, consider memorandum resolution approving the appointment of an assistant city manager. I would ask the council to delay any action on that as this appointment has dropped out of the sky. There's, once again, we have no transparency, no openness. I mean, yes, the prospective candidate's resume and name was posted as part of the agenda, but I wonder if, like last time, there's anything with the previous assistant city manager. Fired for cause, was proud of it. I mean, when do you, any sort of public questioning or vetting by yourselves or ourselves? I mean, this is the number-two slot in the city. Again, I would say delay action on this. Let's get a little more public review. I mean, only a fool takes what's offered to them without asking any questions. I mean, this is nonsense. Once again, there's this conscious indifference, smug indifference by Mr. Cagle when it comes to customer service and being open and honest with the public. There's information that we would like to know. This is the number-two slot in the city. We have a right as citizens, as a person we're going to be paying a salary to, and have one heartbeat away from sitting where Mr. Cagle sits right now, and we don't have the right to find out who it is we're getting, just on their word? I mean, we get verification that this person, if hired, will actually reside within the city of Colleen? Is there any thought or consideration given to sewing up that loophole of where the assistant city manager does not have to reside in Colleen? I mean, this is one hell of a responsibility with quite a large salary compensation package come along with it. I think we, the people, are entitled to know a little bit more about this candidate. I mean, the fact that there was no public vetting, was no public questioning, we don't know anything about this individual. When do we get the right to ask these questions? One, based on previous experience, past history of Mr. Cagle personally and professionally, this is a subject where this is just more of the same. Is there something that he's trying to hide from us and from you? Granted, he does have the sole right to hire and fire the assistant city manager, okay? There's no question there. However, if we're going to be paying the bills on this, I, and any of you who are fiscally responsible and have a functioning cortex, would probably want to ask more questions in public and be able to ask, who is this person? And ask more questions than what's just beyond the presented resume and, I'll go as far as to say, as alleged qualifications. I mean, last time around, with Ms. Singh, several other candidates who were wholly and more professionally experienced and qualified than she was were passed over, and yet she was hired nonetheless. I mean, this is, this is the sort of thing that just defies any logic. I mean, time after time after time after time. Like, there's, I'm sorry, but I got in my gut feeling, there's, there's something around the corner that we're not seeing. There's a card up somebody's sleeve here that we're not seeing. I would like the council to delay approving the hiring of a city manager, or assistant city manager, correction, and let's get some more public vetting. I mean, this is the 19th-largest city in Texas, as often quoted by the mayor. I think we ought to start behaving like it, acting like it, and being responsible for all these, all these larger decisions and have the people respond and have their people weighed in consideration.
Thank you. Anka, good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, I read the resume of the one potential assistant city manager. It's a great resume. I would also like to see the other 87 resumes. Where can we find those? Have you seen them, most of all, the council? The assistant city manager acts as a city manager in the absence of the city manager. Per city ordinance, the city manager has to live within city limits. The last assistant city manager lived in another county, which is against city ordinance. However, the current city manager had no problem choosing her, even though it was against the ordinance. Given this precedent, how can citizens and city council make sure that the ordinance, his city charter, charter are now followed and not just regarding the residents? Many residents expressed concerns about the previous assistant city manager living in another county. However, we were all ignored by the city manager. And let's be realistic, that indifference is not going to change. He's always going to be indifferent. I'm tired of coming up here and complaining. I don't want to complain anymore. So, I have a solution. You may not like it exactly, but it's a solution. I don't know what else to do. I have had a very, very difficult time talking to the current city manager regarding architectural standards, animal shelter.
Ms. Anka.
Okay, I understand.
The subject is the assistant city manager.
Okay, and the city manager, because he's the one choosing the assistant city manager. When I talk to the police, it is regarding assistant city manager. I'm sorry, let me finish. It is regarding assistant city manager. When I talk to the current city manager, he is always very indifferent. When I talk to police, they always show care, always, every single time. They're not afraid of issues. They're not afraid of criticism. I think that the police should be involved in a lot of decisions, including the assistant city manager, because by ordinance, look, the city manager supposedly helps police, helps to train police, ensures that police have the right training. Does the assistant city manager have any kind of legal training, any kind of police training? I didn't see that in the resume. And I know that the current police chief was chosen by city council and because of his stellar resume, and I thank you for that. And I know that current city manager took credit for it, but as far as I know, the city council really chose the current chief of police, and I thank you for that. And I would like for the council to be involved in choosing the assistant city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anka. There's no one, but I do have something to say. The city council only hire the city manager, the city auditor, and the city judge. During that interview process for the potential assistant city manager, our police chief sat in that interview process, so the police was involved in that process. And as you know, in our charter, it states clearly that the city manager handles the daily operation of the city, and that includes the hiring of department heads, the firing of department heads. The council also had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Cagle about the candidates that were the, the last three, the four candidates. So, it's not like the council have been left out of the loop, but we do understand our job and our responsibility. And if something was to happen with the appointment, we know that we talk directly to Mr. Cagle. So, there's not that we've been blindsided or we don't know what's going on. That's not a true statement. We do know what's going on, and we will allow Mr. Cagle to present the appointment and his comments on it, and we'll move forward, and next week, you can come back and we can continue to discuss this. And thank you all for participating in our citizen comments. Does anyone have anything to say before I move on? Thank you. We will now have Menace, Madam Secretary.
MN 23024, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of September 12, 2023.
Thank you. Resolutions?
RS 23158, consider memorandum resolution supporting the city of Colleen's application for the 2023 K-Tempo call for projects for Chaparral Road, Phase Two.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mr. Revel.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. The item tonight is a call for projects associated with K-Tempo. This call for projects is for 2023, and it allows for the development of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan as well as the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is basically a three-year, three-to-four-year plan for transportation projects for all members associated with K-Tempo. We are submitting an application, or have submitted an application, associated with Chaparral Road widening project that you all are familiar with. Phase one, a couple of years back, was approved for funding for about 13 million, and the, and the funding is for construction only. The current grant request that we have will cover Phase Two, which actually goes from East Tremere to Steel House Lake, and we are requesting 30 million. As a part of that process, the applications are due by October the 27th, and we also must submit a resolution of support from the governing body or the city council. Again, just reminding you about the project. Project limit, 6.65 miles. And as we said, this one is going from East Tremere, which is Phase Two, all the way to Steel House Lake Road. $30 million request, construction only. Council has these two alternatives, and staff is recommending that the council provide a resolution of support during the October 17th meeting.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23159, consider memorandum resolution supporting the city of Colleen's application for the 2023 K-Tempo call for projects for the Colleen-Forth Hood Regional Trail.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Snup.
Good evening, council. This is a second project that is also part of the K-Tempo call for projects, which was released on August 31, 2023. It is in preparation for the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan for approved transportation projects. This request is for the $15 million estimated cost of the extension of the Fort Hood Regional Trail, which was previously submitted to K-Tempo in 2020. K-Tempo would fund 80% if approved, which would be $12 million. Applications are due to K-Tempo by October 27th, and to complete the application, they have requested a resolution of support be provided by the local agency. The project runs from the intersection of Elm's Road and Robinette Road to Stan Schluter, down Stan Schluter to approximately where the Walmart Supercenter is, and then along drainage areas down and to Clear Creek Road, SH 201, to Texas A&amp;M University. The alternatives are to not approve the resolution of support for the application or to approve the resolution of support for Colleen's application with K-Tempo. Our recommendation is that the city council approve the resolution of support for Colleen's application with K-Tempo for funding through their 2023 call for projects for the Colleen-Forth Hood Regional Trail expansion.
Thank you for that. I just have one question, and it's about the name Fort Hood. Are we considering changing it to Fort Cabosso's?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be bringing an item to you and council, I believe, in November.
Yes.
For your consideration.
Thank you. Other than that, there are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23160, consider memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement with Biochem Lab Incorporated for the FY 2024 Water, Wastewater, and Environmental Testing Services in an amount not to exceed $59,859.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mr. Ramos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney. This is a letter of agreement for water testing. For annually, we collect about 3,000 water samples for the wastewater and wastewater and about 30 for the environmental stormwater collected annually throughout the city. These tests are required by the TCQ. This year, we got quotes for testing services were received from three different labs. We got Biochem Lab, Aqua Tech Lab, and Anna Lab. Biochem Lab of West Texas submitted the lowest responsible bid at $59,859. We've worked with Biochem over the years. We've had exceptional service from Biochem. Letter of agreement for Biochem Lab's testing services has been proposed for your approval. We have two alternatives here tonight, and we recommend that you do authorize the city manager or it doesn't need to execute a letter of agreement with Biochem Lab in an amount not to exceed $59,859 for water, wastewater, and environmental testing services.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. There's no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23161, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of a STEP grant.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Chief Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers, city manager, and city attorney. This grant, this request is to seek approval to accept the 2024 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP grant for short, through the Texas Department of Transportation, and it allows us to conduct overtime operations to enforce DWI violations, failure to use occupant restraint systems, intersection traffic control violations, and enforcement of state and local ordinances on cellular and texting devices. The grant will provide funding in an amount of $62,547.50, and like I said, it's going to be utilized to provide, pay for overtime to promote traffic safety, reduce crashes, and make the city of Colleen roads safer. The total grant awarded to the city of Colleen is going to be $49,998, and in kind matches $12,549.50, and the funds are included in the fiscal year 2024 overtime budget, and this grant is for fiscal year 2024. An alternative is decline the grant or accept the grant, and the police department recommends we accept the grant.
Thank you, Chief. There are no questions for you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 23162, consider memorandum resolution approving a petition submitted by Scott Brooks requesting release from the city of Colleen extraterritorial jurisdiction for approximately 10.092 acres of land, being approximately 6.723 acres out of the BM Clark survey, abstract number 1160, and approximately 3.37 acres out of the JA Clark survey, abstract number 1258. The subject property is locally addressed as 425 Mercy Ranch Road, Florence, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and I just want the record to show that Councilwoman Gonzalez was here, and she came in on the RS-23-158. I apologize. I didn't recognize you. Welcome back, Mr. Revel.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city manager. This is a request to release property currently located in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, or the ETJ. Basically, this comes as a result of state law that was passed and made effective on September 1st of this year, where it basically allows a petitioner or property owner to, that's in the ETJ, in our ETJ, to actually request to be removed. As we said, this property is actually located at 425 Mercy Ranch Road. The star on the map shows the approximate location of the property within our extraterritorial jurisdiction. There's an aerial of the property. As was stated, it's about 10.1 acres. The bill basically requires, for the council, to make a decision on this, and the decision has to be made, as stated here, within 45 days after the municipality receives the petition. We received the petition on September 1st, or the next meeting of the municipality's governing body, and, or after the 30th day that we received the petition. And so, this is the next meeting. If the council fails to make a decision on this, coming up on October 17th, it will be released by operation of law, and that's written in the state law, in the local government code. The local government code also says that the municipality needs to make the decision as relates to its jurisdiction, and so that's why this is, this item is before you. There are two alternatives, as noted on the slide, and we're recommending that this property be released from the ETJ in accordance with state law.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, I think, early spring approved claiming the CCNs on the south end. I don't know if that area specifically is covered. That's the water rights. What effect of releasing it does that have on that, and as well as the surrounding area for potential city of Colleen growth?
I'm not as familiar with the water rights, so I would have to.
Mr. Cagle, attorney clamors.
The CCN area wouldn't be affected by a release of the ETJ.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's true, yes. It wouldn't be, there may be some other considerations we need to look at, but the release of the ETJ is just that. It wouldn't be subject to regulations that we have that apply to the ETJ, but the CCN would not be affected by that.
Okay, and then the other, are there any other risk of saying, of saying no to this?
Well, if we say no, it's still going to happen, because state law mandates that it happens.
Is it say it happens, or we, it only happens if we don't make a decision?
It happens.
I'm confused.
I understand.
Can you restate?
So, if we go back to the slide, it basically says, it gives the jurisdiction an opportunity to hear the petition, receive it, verify it, to make sure that it's improper with, with the legal requirements. And then, once we receive it, we have to, basically, within 45 days of receipt or 30 days after receipt for the first meeting, make a decision. But if we fail, if the council fails to make a decision, it happens.
Right. My question was if we say no. That's still making a decision. That doesn't make.
And if you say no, it still happens.
That doesn't say that there. I, but, okay.
Well.
I'm not going to debate that point, but that's not what I read there. You can.
I understand your question with regard to what's, what's quoted on the, on the slides. The, the changes to the statute that the legislature made this year does allow an owner to request and receive, it's a ministerial duty for the council to actually approve the release from the ETJ under certain circumstances if the, if the request is proper by law, and staff has made that determination that it is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Segura.
No, I think we hit on what my question was, because I was reading it. It gives them the right to petition, but if we say no, then it's still going to happen, so I don't even know what's the point of bringing it forth to the city council, you know? If this is the case, is there a thing that we as councils say, okay, forget it? We don't even need to see this, because it's irrelevant what we do. And so, maybe there's something that we need to change in our codes there to do that. The other thing is, on the question that I had too, is when, when they get released, I know on the map of our ETJ, you know, we got like a nice little circle there, a nice boundary there. When they get released, is it just that one spot now that's no longer in our ETJ? And it doesn't change that perimeter line or anything? It's just that one little piece of property that will not be part of our ETJ?
Mr. Cagle.
That's correct. Yeah, it'll just be a little void.
Yeah, because I think what will happen is you'll see a domino effect of a lot of people when they see that, wow, that's easy. We can do this. So, we're going to see a lot of little spots in the map, and we'll probably have to keep redefining and adjusting that ETJ boundary there.
That's highly possible. We've, we already are aware of a second request that's coming, and then there's a larger request that could be coming.
Yeah, so this is something big. I mean, this is something that's going to affect a lot. Now, in the future, if, as the city expands out there, what's going to happen then? Do we got a request? How does that work for us to request? Do we do annexation again to bring it into the city, or can we annex something that's not in our ETJ? You know, has that question been answered?
Yeah. With my understanding, we can annex something that's not in our ETJ, and that we can't just bring them back in. They would have to agree to come back in.
So, when they get this done, they just become part of the county, so nothing really changes for them. Their taxes or anything, it just continues to be the same. They're just no longer part of our ETJ.
Yes.
Wow. So, it looks like there's still a lot of unanswered questions here. It's, it's new, and I'm sure that's the reason, so it's no fault on you guys, because I know this is new legislation, and there'll probably be a lot of, you know, unknowns now, because I'm sure if it's some that the state passed, we're not the only city that's going to be affected by this.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Councilmember Boit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, good evening, Mr. Revel.
Good evening, sir.
I know you mentioned there's a second request coming in. Do you foresee or believe that we're going to have a lot more of these requests coming in consistently as a result of this new, this new law?
It's just hard to tell right now. It's just really hard to tell. A lot of it's just going to be based on people's awareness. And so, as Councilman Segura said, as people become more aware that that could happen. We, we just don't know now, but we just know as we get the requests, we're processing them to make sure that they are appropriate and taking it through what the state law requires.
Sure. Now, how would this affect any future planning that we have as far as transportation and things like that? As far as alignment of streets and things like?
Sure. It depends on how much of an impact we have, right? If it's just this, or if it's just here, and then maybe there, and there. There's not much of a concentration, then that may not be as big of an impact. It just depends.
Sure. Yeah, my concern is how the city grows continuously with spots potentially in those different areas, and how you plan around that. Is there any recourse the city has at this point?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
I would just say there's, the statute allows this to happen, but I would like to point out as well, involuntary annexation, that, that was taken away by the, mostly by the state years passed. So, we're talking about ETJ. In, in the past, you could have an annexation plan that would involuntary annex, and, and we no longer can do that. So, most annexations are going to be voluntary anyway, and so, it's going to be somebody who's staying in the ETJ that wants to be annexed by the city. But yes, we can only annex property into the city that is part of the ETJ.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Mabares.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Revel, for the presentation. Correct me if I'm wrong, but properties in the ETJ, I think the, the biggest thing for the city is that we retain platting authority.
Yes.
For properties in the ETJ. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We also have an agreement with the county on how we move forward with that too, as well.
Okay, so I guess the, the appeal to the property owner would be, I'm not in the city's ETJ, so if I want to subdivide my property by meets and bounds or other method, I can do so. The city won't have platting authority over me. May seem like a good idea, but in regards to the CCN, if that area, any area falls within the CCN that we are working to acquire or have acquired, and they look for potable water service provider, their only option would be city of Colleen. Is that correct?
If it's in it.
Unless there's a dual CCN holder.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, one.
Yes, sir.
We knew this was new, and we wanted to bring this one, and it might be your desire just to say, don't bring it back to us since you don't have a choice. You don't do anything. It's out of the ETJ. So, it, it's however you want to do it. If you want to see it. If you want to see a couple more of them to kind of see what's going on, at some point you may want to tell us, just stop, stop bringing these to us.
I agree, because we don't really have any control of it if they want to leave. But, Mr. Revel, thank you, and I guess the council will ponder over it to see, someone may make a motion of direction not to bring it back to us, because it is the statute.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, we have one more person. I apologize. Councilmember Adams.
Just to be real quick, I, I know we don't, we won't have a say in it, but I think it'd still be important that we know where, so, so that we know for our future planning purposes.
With that, yes, sir, that would be the council's choice, if they wanted to come back or make a motion of direction to not come back. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Revel. Madam Secretary.
RS 23-163. Consider a memorandum resolution approving the appointment of an Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Bart.
All right. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and City Manager. The item before you is recruitment and selection of an Assistant City Manager. I'd like to start with just a little bit of a background. On May the 23rd, the position of the Assistant City Manager became vacant, and then on June the 7th, the city signed an agreement with Strategic Government Resources, which is a consultant, and they performed a nationwide executive search for the Assistant City Manager. They were able to recruit up to 88 candidates, and 12 of the 88 candidates were selected to do a video, a video interview, so they do that first. By the time we got to the video interview, we had two of them that dropped out, so only 10 of them did the video interview, and then we again met, City Management and Human Resource met with the consultant, and then we decided on the five finalists to do an in-person interview, and that interview took place on September the 8th. Based on the panel and the feedback that we gave Mr. Cagle, and Mr. Cagle going back and forth, we selected, he selected Lori, Lori Wilson as the City of Colleen's Assistant City Manager. Ms. Wilson comes to the City of Colleen with 11 years of municipal government experience. She started her career in municipal government in 2012 as an administrative intern in Parks and Recreation with the City of Carrollton. Then a year later, she promoted to a marketing coordinator for the City of Carrollton as well, and followed by another promotion shortly after that in '15 as the Administrative Services, Administrative Services Manager slash City Secretary for the City of Carrollton. And then since 2017, she has been serving as the Administrative Services Director for the City of Carrollton, and she oversees the Solid Waste Department, utility billings, municipal court, the call center, and then the City Secretary's Office. Also, and she, and this is all in the City of Carrollton. Ms. Wilson received her Bachelor's of Arts in Science and Political Science and a minor in Public Administration from the University of North Texas. She holds several certifications, and I'm just going to name a few of them. She is certified as a Public Manager Certification with the Texas State University. She also is a Texas Registered Municipal Court Clerk. She is also certified municipal clerk, and she's also been recognized in ICMA as an Emerging Leader. Ms. Wilson is also involved in the following professional affiliations. She's past president of the Urban Management Assistance of North Texas. She's also North Texas City Managers, she's involved in the North Texas City Managers Association. She's involved with the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. She's also sat as a Clerk of the Year on a committee for the Clerk of the Year, and also an ICMA 2020 Conference Planning Committee. She is also highly involved in her community. She partakes in several citizen academies, as well as holding the chair on a number of different committees and boards. Your alternatives tonight are to either approve or disapprove City Manager's selection of Ms. Lori Wilson as the City of Colleen Assistant City Manager, and staff recommends the appointment of Ms. Wilson as Assistant City Manager, and she's here this evening if you guys would like to have, ask any questions or would like to meet her.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, would you please come up to the podium? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
It's good to meet you. Would you like to share anything with the council?
I'm thrilled to be here this evening as this item is considered before you. When this position came open in Colleen, I was very excited, not only for the opportunity, but also for my family. We have every intention of moving to the City of Colleen and becoming residents and getting highly involved in this community. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember, we're glad you're here. Councilmember Segura.
Thank you, Mayor, and at this point, I know we're going to approve you next week, but I just wanted to be the first one to say congratulations for making it through the gauntlet that we provide, we put all our employees, our staff through, to make it through here, but I just want to assure you that it's a wonderful city, and I just want to be one of the very first ones to say, welcome, welcome to our great city, and just congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Bullitt.
Good evening, good evening, Ms. Wilson.
Bye, Harry.
Happy to have you here. I had one question, the specific question was, are you going to live in the City of Colleen? You've already answered that.
I sure did, absolutely. We're actually looking at houses Friday and Saturday, we're very excited.
Very good. Definitely consider the western portion of Colleen.
You got it.
Um, this too, please. We're playing, Councilmember Bullitt on four.
As well, as well...
There's a lot of wonderful options out there.
There are. Good answer. No, I do look forward to you being with the city at some point, and we're looking forward to having that seat filled to take some of the burden of our city managers who's doing a outstanding job rate. Thank you.
Thank you. My Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. I guess a quick question, and it's not a, may not be a fast answer, if you can't answer it now, that's fine. Have you had a chance to look at our comprehensive plan, and what is your overall view of it?
Absolutely. I've reviewed your comprehensive plan, your vision plan. I'm very excited about it. To put together a plan like that takes tremendous commitment and dedication, takes a lot of courage, especially when you solicit that much community input, and that was one of the things that really attracted me to the City of Colleen. You don't ask for opinions like that if you're not ready to move forward on them, and so the fact that you're willing to substantiate a lot of the data that you put into that plan and put it into action through several actionable items and measurable performance metrics shows that you are committed to continuously moving Colleen forward, and that's a community that I want to be a part of.
Okay, thank you. My second, my second question is, has to do with our, usually know we have a homeless issue. I don't know how much different that is, is if you have an initial view on that, and that'd be my last question.
You know, I haven't spent time looking specifically on the homeless issue in Colleen. That's something that's really affecting a lot of communities throughout the nation, regardless of their size, their access to public transit. I'm highly engaged in the International City Managers Association, I actually just came from that conference today, as well as several groups across the state of Texas, and that's a conversation we continue to have. So I'd be excited to bring some of those best practices to Colleen.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Good evening, and welcome. Welcome to Colleen. My question is a personal question and a city question. Personal question, what do you like to do?
Believe it or not, I love to volunteer. I'm heavily involved in our Rotary Club and look forward to joining the club in Colleen as well.
Colleen Heights, I'm the membership chair.
There you go. I think you got a new member coming.
Okay, so we know, we know it's your pastime would be volunteering. What's important to you? Coming into a seat of an Assistant City Manager, it's important. You've heard some comments tonight. What's important to you for this city?
I think a lot of this is going to, as the external candidate, as I explained in my interview to Mr. Cagle, a lot of this for me is going to have to start with listening, listening to the needs of staff, listening to the needs of the community, listening to the goals and desires of the City Council to make sure that the plans that we're putting forward are effective and meeting the needs of this community.
All right, thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And maybe I'll take you golfing one Saturday morning.
You'd probably win.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Again, thank you for submitting. We trust our City Manager's decision. You've heard that, and you've said something that was important, first of all, which was listening to the staff and the team as you're coming on board, obviously them being a good helpmeet to our City Manager, which is extremely important. As you've heard though, through our citizens, and there's always, you know, a little concern and skepticism, we've got somebody new coming in from the outside, you know, how would you reassure our population that you were coming in, to your point, with open ears, open eyes, but then how do you plan to help add that sense of comfort that you are on our team to help us continue to turn our tide and move our city forward?
That's not going to be me saying anything, that's going to be me taking some action. I'm going to have to get out in the community, meet different leaders of your community organizations, active residents, to make sure they see me, that I'm here, I'm listening, and I'm bringing those concerns back to the team at Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Ms. Wilson, we are happy for you to be here, and one of the things that I would like to say is that I am really extremely big on the comprehensive plan. We have it, we put it in place, we, you're right, we did a lot of work to put that in place, and I just wanted to follow through with it. Mr. Cagle has been carrying the weight for a while, and for him to choose you, I'm excited that he looked for certain criteria, so being in his profession for over 30 years, he chose you, and we trust him, the council, on his appointments for department heads and Assistant City Managers, because you will be working with, I know me and the rest of the council, so it's very important to have that overview of what is needed to move, continue, I should say, to move our city forward. So I'm looking forward to working with you if the council vote to accept your appointment as Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS 23-096. Discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for all SS 4A grant.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Cagle.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we don't have anything tonight. Once again, this is a placeholder, and K-Tempo has not sent us anything.
Thank you. Madam Secretary. Councilmember Adams.
I, I did attend one of K-Tempo's workshops for ambassadors for the Safe Streets program. I will be requesting the mayor a proclamation for October as part of the process of getting the grant.
Okay, if you go through our Communication Director, Janelle Ford, I will take care of it. Madam Secretary.
DS 23-097. Discuss and consider delaying the waiving of registration fees for short-term rentals until after the customer portal implementation is complete.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So on August 1st, City Council provided a motion of direction to waive the registration fees for the month of October 2023, and currently, we are working with Avenue Insights to set up the customer portal for the registration and the permitting. The permitting part is not a cookie cutter system, as every city's ordinance is different, and so that is taking a little longer than we had expected, and so we are requesting to extend the motion of direction to waive the registration fee for the first month after the completion of the implementation. We have a team of finance, development services, and community development that are all working with Avenue Insights, and we're meeting weekly with them, so we are working on it to get that out, and we're getting very close, but, so that, that is the request.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. You, you have an estimated date yet?
I would be hesitant to provide that.
Okay.
Just because we, we want to make sure that we get this right for the, the users.
Okay, then Madam Mayor, if it's in order, move, move to extend the motion of direction until a date and time when staff come back, notifying completion.
Councilmember Bullitt.
Second.
Any more questions? All in favor of the motion of direction for an extension? Yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries seven to zero. Can I get a motion adjourned?
Madam Mayor, move to adjourn.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.